Coming up on UGTV. A special session of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas.[43.41][43.41] [S01] All right, we're going to go ahead and get started. We want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. We did start our meeting about 15 minutes late due to the tornado warning, and we appreciate everyone taking cover and being safe. And we want to continue to monitor the situation through the evening, but we are ready to begin. I'll ask the clerk to please announce the meeting and call the roll.
A special session has been held on Thursday, May 26, 2016, at 5:00 PM in the Fifth floor Conference Room for a presentation by Case State Research and Extension, followed by the 2016 through 2021 CMIP budget. Roll call. Bynum.
Here.
Walker. Townsend. McKernan.
Here.
Mugia.
Here.
Mugia.
Talking, sorry.
Johnson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Markley.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Philbrook.
Here.
Holland.
Here. All right, thank you very much. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bach for presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, we have four, as we had asked, I think commissioners had asked a couple of times, as well as the extension, to have a presentation by them to come in. So this evening, we have Case State Research and Extension with us, and they're going to give us a presentation about some of the things they do and services they provide to the community. So with that, I will turn this over to Bruce Cladney and let him introduce his group and give his presentation.
Great. Thank you so very much, and good evening to you all. Thank you, Mayor, for the invitation, and commissioners, and Mr. Bach, for inviting us to come be with you this afternoon or this evening. We appreciate the invitation and the opportunity to speak with you folks. I am Bruce Cladney, the Director for the Case State Research and Extension Office here in Wyandotte County, also known as the Wyandotte County Extension Office, which is a part of a much larger extension system, which actually there's a county extension office in every one of the 105 counties across the state of Kansas. And joining me this evening is Dr. Nozella Brown, and then Dr. Chiquita Miller, and also Lori Woolner, and you'll be hearing from these ladies in just a few minutes. The Wyandotte County Extension Council is an informational resource for our community. As part of the much larger Case State Research and Extension System, the Wyandotte County Extension Office stresses the importance of enriching the lives of our citizens by providing opportunities to engage in lifelong learning and to benefit from the results of worldwide research. Locally, our mission is to provide leadership and education through evidence-based culturally-appropriate programs and information that improves the quality of life for all of our citizens. In a nutshell, our slogan is "Knowledge for Life," and we have been doing this since the first Extension Council organized here in Wyandotte County. Am I take a guess when?
1861.
1861, not quite that long ago, but October 25 of 1917. So we're coming up on our 100th anniversary that the Wyandotte County Extension Council has been in our community. Without giving too much history, we are allowed for by federal and state laws, but we have four main funding sources. As you can see, the commission provides the single largest share of direct operating funds, but note that the $478,050 that shows up in your budget as the Wyandotte County Extension Council in the outside agencies tab is used to leverage an additional $241,000 in state funds, $284,000 in grant funds, and $152,000 in federal funds, all of which are used to provide the educational programs here in our community that you're going to be hearing about tonight. So in FY 2015, we had some 125 recognized volunteers in our Extension Master Gardener, Extension Master Food, and 4H Youth Development Programs. And I would encourage and invite any and all of you to add to those numbers by joining us sometime and be a volunteer for us, like several of your colleagues have done. These volunteers logged some 7,929 hours, offering programs that make a difference in the community in which they live and work. If you do the math and multiply these hours of service by the national rate of $20.88 per volunteer hour, you will see that our volunteers donated an additional $166,557 worth of time and talent, not reflected in the previous slide. So collectively, we offered at least 1,370 educational programs at which 34,574 citizens attended last year. But we did not do this alone. We had almost 100 collaborating organizations that we've worked with and partnering agencies. And you'll see a complete list, we're not going to go through the complete list, but in your packet, there's a little flyer, and you'll see the list of all of the cooperating agencies that we worked with in the past year. Hopefully, your agency's on there. So with that, I'd like to invite Dr. Brown to say a few words about the programs that she's involved with.
And as you just heard, part of the cooperative extension, our mission, is to connect the university to the community, and thereby, we're here to improve the quality of life for all citizens, for common people. We exist really to just make a difference. So when the food stamp program, now that we call the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, when it was administered by the Department of Children and Families, DCF, our federal government realized that providing money for people really didn't ensure that people would make healthy choices. We needed some education. So they created that Supplemental Assistant Nutrition Education Program that we call the SNAPEd. And we, Case State, receives about $2.5 million in grant funding every year to coordinate SNAPEd in nearly 80 counties. We at Wyandotte County are really fortunate to be one of the largest counties receiving that funding of over $120,000 for SNAPEd. We also receive another $40,000 for the Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Program, which is the second federally funded program for low-income families with children. These monies are specifically earmarked for programming. But what's exciting to me, as the Extension Coordinator of these programs at Case State Extension, is that it allows us to hire educators and to partner with over 31 county agencies in all six districts in Wyandotte, including many of our schools. And over the 13 years that I have been the nutrition educator for Extension, the demand for nutrition and wellness education, especially culturally-sensitive, evidence-based curriculum and resources, has really increased. Our class structure includes a minimum of four hours of teaching time, because that's the amount of time that research shows is necessary to really make behavior change. And those that are enrolled in our FNEP program, the expanded program, they usually complete eight to 10 classes. Last year alone, we had over 5,500 unduplicated participants in our classes. The demand for our culturally-sensitive, evidence-based programs in Wyandotte is so great that now we not only do direct education, but we also provide consultation, culturally-based, evidence-based resources, and train-the-trainer workshops to kind of expand our outreach. Currently, we're also collaborating with other agencies on grants to improve access to healthy food for schoolchildren, for seniors, and for Latinos, and we bring in an additional $38,000. We know that for the state of Kansas, our Extension Nutrition and Wellness Programs save the state $27 million in future healthcare costs, and that's a projected $1.7 million in future healthcare costs for Wyandotte alone. But let me just conclude by telling you the story of Irma. She's a mother who just attended a recent FNEP class. She attended all 10 classes despite having to walk to each one with her five little preschoolers that she babysits each day. At her FNEP graduation, she kept thanking our educator for teaching her how to shop smarter, how to cook healthy, how to eat healthy, because she said, "You know, it has changed my life." She went on to explain that she had just visited her doctor, and getting emotional, she began to report that not only had she lost a significant amount of weight, but he had taken her off of insulin. And that's the kind of return that we often see on our investment, and it's just one of the examples of how we are making a difference with these programs. Thank you.
Okay, you know this is going to be difficult for me to keep it in like a couple minutes, but I will try, and everything. And I'm going to start out with my conversation. You have to understand, I come from a social work background, and also, I'm a substance abuse counselor, and as well as a Army veteran, so it all comes out when it needs to at different points and times and everything. And excuse me now, Commissioner McKernan, and Mayor Holland, and I think also Mr. Chriswell over there, but I do have some stats from our Raisin of America that really, you know, particularly pertains to Wyandotte County. So just so you have an idea of my background and what I'm doing in my fight, in my constant fight, to make sure that our families are receiving these core areas in parenting, my community service, the budgeting piece, and also the clean and clutter free, you'll know that by the end of my conversation. 81.2% of Wyandotte County children live in poverty and receive reduced lunch. 23.8% of Wyandotte County population has less than a high school degree. 40%, and this is over the US, five-year-olds are not ready to learn by kindergarten. Also, and this is Wyandotte County, 35% of the children living in poverty in Wyandotte County, pregnancy rate between the ages of 10, and I am saying between 10 and 19, is 29.4 per 1,000. And also, 22% percentage of uninsured adults here in Wyandotte County. These are your citizens, these are the people that you represent, and these are the people you serve. So this is my plight every day to work with these families and ensure that they have some hope of having the American dream. As you see from my slide, on the parenting side, I work on two elements. One is prevention, so I work with organizations that want to offer parenting classes for, I've worked with EPIC, Empowering the Parent and Power of the Child. Nativity House is another program that house young adult women that they can live there up to a year after they have their child, so they have a safe place to live, and these are homeless adults, and that's here in Wyandotte County. Also, I do individual parenting classes with parents that are court-ordered. And as I said earlier, when I became a social worker, a lot of my parents were, the court orders basically said, "You will have parenting classes, you will maintain a job, you will maintain a budget, and you will have sustainable housing for your family." And also, some of the children were removed because of a dirty home or unkept home and everything. So though, as you see, the common theme that are working with this to try to keep these families from dealing with those areas as well. So the prevention side, also, my parenting classes are not the mainstream, they're not, you know, nine-to-five type classes. I just finished up parents that had to be, they had court on May 8, and we, they worked, so heaven forbid, parents do work these days. So I had to meet with them from 5:30, sometimes we didn't finish up until 9:00, 9:30 at night, because those parents needed that parenting class, and I will work with them as long as they're willing to work with me. So this is not a traditional setup here. Okay, the money part and everything, I've worked for the, I've been with the extension for 16 years, and I go into places where, you know, like I said, people are not going to normally think about going. I work with the Wyandotte County Detention Center with the males and also the females, this is my 16th year of doing that as well. I also work with DCF, and these are all unduplicated services that we're working with. As Bruce sent earlier, or had in the slide, we support 99 different agencies, and that's only for 2015. So over the years, we've had more. We only went back to 2015 to kind of give you more of a current picture of what we're actually doing. So I work with them, I work with DCF, I also work with individuals, and I also get the opportunity to work with Rosedale, and they have a Girl Scouts group. So I, so we start as young, all the way to the age, so I work with anybody that's dealing with budgeting, that's one of the areas that I'm most passionate about, because we can't eat healthy, we can't pay our rent. Now they're doing background checks, drug screens, as well as credit checks before we're getting jobs these days. So that's a really important thing to have as well. Also, the clean and clutter free, like I told you before, children are being removed from their home because of unkept conditions. So I work in the prevention, I work with housing authorities, so that we can work with programs to educate them and how to remain healthy. Last year, I got a chance to work with 13 women from Nepal, and really talk to them and educate them about, you know, standards in the US and how to keep their housing up, and that was a prevention effort as well. I also, the other day, got to work with a lady, she was in her 80s, and she's in one of the senior high-rises, and she was at risk of losing her housing because the standards at this high-rise, she was not in compliant, and she was going to fail. So five of, I mean, for five hours, seven of us, and I'm going to tell you that the average age was probably 72, that was helping me to keep this resident in her home. She was a retired nurse, in her 80s, and she was at risk of losing her sustainability because of this unkept condition. So we worked tirelessly for five hours in that home to keep her up to standard, and the reason why I was in there in the first place is because she, it was so much clutter that she tripped and broke her ankle. So she was having surgery, and we were trying to get the house up to par so that she could come back for that. And so just kind of, so understand, this is not, I mean, this is something that is for real, and this is why we're working really hard and tirelessly to get those efforts met. Community, some of the projects you may be familiar with that I work extensively with, the Wyandotte County Homeless Coalition, the Employment Consortium, the Back to School Fair, every year, that's my 7th year, 7th year working with them. We provide over 4,000 school supplies free to any resident here in Wyandotte County, as well as physicals and immunization and a whole lot of things as well as that. Like I said, several of you around the table have worked with the Raisin of America, and in your packet, you will find, we're going to do some additional screenings for the community at the main branch library, so that's a part of your packet. And also, we are going to attract, we're going to work with the business community to educate them on the concerns of Raisin of America with those facts as well, with some of those things. Also, too, at the Kansas City, Kansas Community College, every year, I take the IRS test so I can do taxes. This year, we completed it, and from February to April, worked on taxes, and at the Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and we served 667 there, and over 1,000 volunteer hours during that process. And so just understand, and a little less than a million dollars was brought back to this community so that the residents did not have to pay for tax preparation and everything like that, too. So, but I can go on and on and on, but I really want to just let you know that we are here for a purpose, and we're in this fight to make sure that our residents can be the best they can be. I will leave you with a little minor case study of my own. I met this parent, I'm going to call her Ms. L. for now, whatever, she attended a parenting session that I did in 2014, and she completed all 10 sessions. After she got done with that one, she was really concerned about health and weight, and so she met with one of our FNP staff, Cassandra Brown, and she took advantage of that class, she lost weight, and continues to live healthy. She does have a bachelor's degree in Wyandotte County in early ed, and she's in the District 500 School District, and, but she, and also in 2014, she did the Wyandotte County Extension Office, we hosted a toy drive, so she did get a chance to come in and take, and have toys for her kids, and then for the giveaway, and then she had a crisis that came up, because as many of you have been around the table long enough, you know, when I talk about the Wyandotte County Homeless Coalition, we do have the working poor, but that's another day, and everything like that. So we did another organization that I work with, Mothers to Mothers Ministry, gave her $300 to pay, because she had a PU bill that she had to pay. And then she wanted to go to graduate school to be a middle school counselor, and then she applied for that, she asked me if I would assist her in writing a letter for that endeavor. She did not get in upon the first request, but she did get into the fall. So now in 2016, she is a master's student in the college, and she is a Wyandotte County native, she is working in Wyandotte County schools, and she's doing good. So just understand that we are in this fight, we are wanting things to be better. And I will leave with your slogan from the Human Ecology School at Kansas State University. In a world focused on things, we focus first on people, and that's my mantra. Thank you.
All right, evening. So I chose, my better, so I chose, ooh, that's the focus of food safety education, in part because it's something I've been very active in teaching since I've been with Extension, which all I can say is I've been here longer than my colleagues to my right. So I won't tell you how long, but, you know, it's one of those, like I said, I have a passion for, and it's not a topic that is very appealing, you know, to people, like, "Ooh, food safety education, that's so exciting." Not, not really, but it does, and I stand on the premise that if you eat food, you are directly affected by the safety of our food. And so I really encourage people to kind of look at that, the big picture in that, and I put a few points up there. Reduces foodborne illness, healthcare costs, and so on, you can see those for yourself. Serve Safe, the how-to, what I do, really, there are two different levels, the food service level, and then the consumer level. Serve Safe is a national curriculum that most agents in the state of Kansas use, and there's two levels of that. There's one for the baseline, the food handler level, that's the one that I most currently teach, but there's also manager level, which is a certification level. And then, and then at the consumer level, there is, of course, basic safe food handling, but also food preservation. You probably wouldn't, I don't know if you know, but there's a lot more people that are interested in food preservation, so I feel it's our job at KSRE to make sure people are getting accurate, safe information, and not on the internet, and not from their aunt, sorry if there's any aunts that are providing that information, or your neighbor, because it's a serious business, it, you know, could be a business, but serious in terms of food safety. I wanted to note also that KDA, Kansas Department of Ed, they are actively working with our county in making sure that when they're out doing inspections, they're sharing the information about Serve Safe, so I appreciate that, and, you know, they're really encouraging people, especially if restaurants are having issues, to come and attend our class. We know that Missouri, they acquire a food handler card, Kansas does not, so we just hope that we stand on education for these folks, and that's why I want to make sure that we offer it on an ongoing basis, and get myself out there. The who, well, I also wanted to say that in your annual report on page nine, we do fall under, Serve Safe is identified, so it is a significant program in the state of Kansas, and so you'll find that under the grand challenge of health. In terms of who, it runs a gamut, really. With the food service, restaurants, multiple senior living centers, multiple daycares. In terms of the restaurant, Jose Peppers may sound familiar to you, and Hilton Garden Inn, I've been working with them for years, and I just made contact with their new GM, and she's very excited to continue relations and try to get their new staff through, so I was encouraged about that. Another one, let's see, oh, the Area Agency on Aging. This partnership occurred because of, in January of 2015, there was an outbreak of norovirus in another part of Kansas that resulted in 61 illnesses and one death. So that, in itself, concerned So we worked tirelessly for five hours in that home to keep her up to standard. And the reason why I was in it in the first place is because she, it was so much clutter that she tripped and broke her ankle. So she was having surgery and we were trying to get the house up to par so that she could come back for that. And so just kind of, so understand, this is not, I mean, this is something that is for real and this is why we're working really hard and tirelessly to, to get those, um, efforts met. Community, um, some of the projects you may be familiar with that I work extensively with, the, um, the Wyandotte County Homeless Coalition, the Employ Me Consortium, the Back to School Fair, um, uh, every year, that's my seventh year, seventh year working with them. Uh, we provide over four thousand, um, school supplies free to any resident here in Wyandotte County, um, as well as physicals and immunization and a whole lot of things as well as that. Um, like I said, um, several of you around the table have worked with the Raisin of America and in your packet, you will find, we're gonna do some additional screenings, um, for the community at the main branch library. So that's a part of your packet. And also, we are gonna, um, attract, we're gonna, um, work with the business community to educate them on the concerns of Raisin of America with those facts as well, with some of those things. Also too, at the Kansas City, Kansas Community College, every year, um, I take the IRS test so I can do taxes. This year, um, we, uh, we, I completed it in from the, from February to April, worked on taxes. And at the Kansas City, Kansas Community College and, um, and we served, um, six hundred and sixty-seven there and over a thousand volunteer hours, um, doing that process. And so just understand, and a little less than a million dollars was brought back to this community so that the residents did not have to pay for tax preparation and everything like that too. So, but I can go on and on and on, but I really want to just let you know that we are here for a purpose and we're in this fight to make sure that our residents can be the best they can be. I will leave you with a little minor, um, uh, case study of my own. I met this parent, I'm gonna call her Ms. L for now, whatever. She attended a parenting, um, session that I did in twenty fourteen and she completed all ten sessions. After she got done with that one, she was really concerned about health and weight. And so she met with one of our, um, FNP staff, Cassandra Brown, uh, and she, um, she, uh, took advantage of that class, she lost weight and continues to live, um, healthy. She does have a bachelor's degree in Wyandotte County in early ed and she's in the, um, the District Five Hundred School District and, um, but she, and also in twenty fourteen, she did, um, the Wyandotte County Extension Office, we hosted a toy drive. So she did get a chance to come in and take, and have toys for her kids and then for the giveaway. And then, um, she had a crisis that came up because as many of you have been around the table long enough, you know, when I talk about the Wyandotte County Homeless Coalition, we do have the working poor, but that's another day. And everything like that. So we did another organization that I work with, Mothers to Mothers Ministry gave her three hundred dollars to pay because she had a BPU bill that she had to pay. And then she wanted to go to graduate school to be a middle school counselor and then she applied for that. She asked me if I would assist her in writing a letter for that endeavor. She did not get in upon the first request, but she did get into the fall. So now in twenty sixteen, she is a master's student um, in the college and she is a Wyandotte County native. She is working in the Wyandotte County Schools and she's doing good. So just understand that we, we are in this fight. We are wanting things to be better. And I will leave with your slogan from the, um, from, from the Human Ecology School at Kansas State University. In a world focused on things, we focus first on people. And that's my mantra. Thank you.
Um, all right, evening. Um, so I chose.
Yep.
My better. So I chose, ooh, that's the focus of, um, food safety education. Um, in part because it's something I've been, um, very active in, in teaching since I've been with Extension, which all I can say is I've been here longer than my colleagues to my right. So I won't tell you how long. Uh, but it, you know, it's one of those, like I said, I have a passion for and it's not a topic that is very appealing, you know, to people like, ooh, food safety education, that's so exciting. Not, not really. But, um, it does, and I, I stand on the premise that if you eat food, you are directly affected by the safety, um, of our food. And, um, so I really encourage people to kind of look at that, the big picture in that. And I, I put a few points up there. Reduces foodborne illness, um, healthcare cost and so on. You can see those for yourself. Um, Serve Safe, the how to, the, what I do, um, really, there are two different levels, the, uh, food service level and then the consumer level. Serve Safe is a national curriculum that most agents in the state of Kansas use. And there's two levels of that. It's, there's one for the, um, baseline, the food handler level. That's the one that I most currently teach, but there's also manager level, which is a certification level. Uh, and then, um, and then at the consumer level, there is of course basic safe food handling, but also food preservation. You probably wouldn't, I don't know if you know, but there's a lot of more, more people that are interested in food preservation. So I feel it's our job at KSRE to make sure people are getting accurate, safe information and not on the internet and not from their aunt. Sorry if there's any aunts that are providing that information or your neighbor because it, it's a serious, um, uh, business. It, you know, could be a business, but, uh, serious in terms of food safety. I wanted to note also that, uh, KDA, Kansas Department of Ag, they are actively working with our county in, um, making sure that when they're out doing inspections, they're sharing the information about Serve Safe. So I appreciate that and, uh, you know, they're really encouraging people, especially if restaurants are having issues to come and attend, attend our class. Um, we know that Missouri, they acquire a food handler card, Kansas does not. So we just hope that we stand on education for these folks and, and that's why I want to make sure that we offer it on an ongoing basis and, uh, get myself out there. Um, the who, um, well, I also wanted to say that in your, um, your, um, annual report on page nine, uh, we, uh, do fall under, Serve Safe is identified, so it is a significant program in the state of Kansas. Um, and so you'll find that under, um, the grand challenge of, uh, health. Um, in terms of who, it runs a gamut really. Um, with the food service, uh, restaurants, multiple, uh, senior living centers, uh, multiple daycares. In terms of the restaurant, Jose Peppers may sound familiar to you. Um, and Hilton Garden Inn, I've been working with them for years. And I just made contact with their, the new GM and she's very excited to continue relations, um, and try to get their new staff through. So I was encouraged about that. Um, another one, let's see. Oh, the Area Agency on Aging. Uh, this partnership occurred because of, in January of two thousand and fifteen, there was an outbreak of norovirus in another part of Kansas that resulted in sixty-one illnesses and one death. So that in itself concerned, um, or heightened the concern, um, and caused, uh, the two, uh, agencies to come together. And I provided, um, direct education for their, not only staff, but also their volunteers. And you'll see up there, I have Sporting KC. So that's another one that I've been onsite. Again, I make myself available to, um, businesses to come onsite to provide Serve Safe. So if you, any of you go to Sporting KC, you can be assured that the food is safe. Um, and then beyond that, you can see my direct, uh, education and indirect. Um, one thing I wanted to point out about the food safety kits, um, I've been working with the Latino Health For All Coalition, um, and providing Serve Safe classes that have been, typically they're translated for me. Um, but we really wanted to look at a way that we can, um, enhance and sustain that education that they learn, especially within businesses that have, um, you know, small capacity, not capacity, but they don't have very many people working for them. And it can, it's really difficult for them to afford that time away for classes. And so I'm in the process of, um, assembling food safety kits. And right now, um, we have five at El Centro, three of which that have been placed into those, uh, three restaurants identified there. Um, and five more are on the docket being prepared. So again, it's our hope that we can, um, sustain the education that's been learned thus far and also provide a way in which, um, these small business owners, um, can continue to, um, educate their small staff um, and, and provide, um, education and in service for them. So. And then, uh, the bottom one, those are just a couple of comments that I've taken from the survey, surveys that I, um, I, um, complete at the end of all my classes. But there's many more to that, but I just wanted to pull out the main ones. So. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, we're not done yet. We still have two more programs to go. So this is what the bang for your buck that you're getting. So. The 4H Youth Development, we don't, do not currently have a 4H Youth Development Agent on staff right now. Uh, she resigned a couple of weeks ago and will be in the process of, of filling that position. But many of you may recognize the Kelly Green Four Leaf Clover used to promote the 4H Program. But do you know what the four Hs are and what the 4H Program stands for? That's not a rhetorical question. Who's got the four Hs? Anybody? What's that?
Husband dream.
No, that's not one of them.
Health.
Health is one of them.
Heart.
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 Hands. And head. That's exactly right. The four Hs represent the head, the heart, the hands and the health. And these are all the areas of a youth that the 4H Program is designed to build. The 4H Youth Development Program is the umbrella term used by Extension to encompass all of our youth development programming. And as such, the 4H Program is much, much more than cows, pigs and chickens. The 4H Youth Development Program is an all-inclusive youth development program focusing on citizenship, personal health and growth, community involvement and much more. It's true that there is a long history of 4H Youth in the County Fair, probably our most noted event of the year. However, 4H takes place the other fifty-one weeks of the year as well. It's true, we have two hundred youth enrolled in established or what we call traditional 4H Clubs. There's seven of those across the county. And these youth can choose to participate in any of our thirty-three projects, such as geology, entomology, space tech, fiber arts and shooting sports. And as a side note, pay attention to the Olympics this summer as one of our former 4Hers, Lydia Patterson, may be competing with her rifle this year. So she started by shooting BBs at the 4H Camp. This number of participants is down from years ago and that is no secret. But what many people don't know is that we have been growing our other portion of the 4H Program called Expanded 4H. Here, we are reaching out to all of the youth in our community, trying to reach them with a very different and very targeted youth development program. For example, we had over five thousand, six hundred youth reached with environmental education through the Extension Master Gardener Volunteer Program. Likewise, we have had a partnership with the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools to staff and run part of their before and after in schools out for the summer program called Kid Zone. Here, some one thousand, two hundred youth receive valuable and life-changing nutrition education programming. Trained staff are using scientifically proven education programs to teach youth a better way of snacking and staying active. This partnership has been going on for almost fifteen years and continues to gain national recognition and support as is evidenced by the continued funding through federal and local grant dollars. Kid Zone is working. And then finally, this summer, we are trying something new. A partnership is formed between us, the National Agriculture Hall of Fame and Farm Bureau to offer a series of summer camps called Camp Grow. During these two-week sessions, campers will have the chance to learn about a whole host of 4H activities while staying active and being engaged in meaningful play and exploration. Through the vision and hard work of the Ag Hall Director, Don Gable, we are expecting this partnership to introduce the next generation of 4H, uh, next generation of youth, excuse me, to 4H and all that it has to offer. So that is our 4H Youth Development Program. And then last but not least, we would be remiss if we didn't talk for just a minute about our horticulture program. We do have a horticulture program, uh, leader, uh, Extension Agent Lynn Lowry and she has been hunkered down in her dwelling trying to avoid the storm. So I told her I would do her portion this evening. So she stayed safe. So you may not know this, and actually I was able, I was actually kind of happy to do this because I have the pleasure of saying that I was the first full-time horticulture extension agent ever to be hired in Wyandotte County back in nineteen ninety-six. I followed a gentleman by the name of Jim Gibby. That may be a name that you recognize. I jokingly say that this is my second tour of duty in the DOT. Since at that time, uh, I have been amazed at how the horticulture program has grown. And for those that are not sure what horticulture is, it is the study of fruits, vegetables, flowers, trees and shrubs. Something that every single one of us encounters every day and something none of us would be alive without. So if you don't think horticulture is important in your life, think again. Our horticulture program has three main areas of focus, youth programming, home or what we call residential horticulture and the Extension Master Gardener Program. Our youth programming focuses on a wide variety of topics designed to teach youth about the world they live in. We teach them about growing fruits and vegetables, composting and recycling, and caring for the environment through natural resource conservation. Last year, we worked with five thousand, six hundred and sixty-one youth from Banneker, Emmy Pearson, Prepare House, Rainbow Freedom School, Bonner Schools, Turner Schools and a whole lot more through our demonstration garden at the National Hag Hall of Fame. In the area of home or residential horticulture, we have, uh, around three thousand contacts annually use our service. And as you can see in that bottom left-hand corner, their residents can call or come into our office and receive answers to their pressing needs without the sales hype to buy and use a chemical that may not be needed or is not safe for the environment. As you can see, we answer questions about lawns, trees, shrubs, flowers, fruits, vegetables, house plants, insects, wildlife and soils. So we get a lot of strange things coming into our office on a very regular basis. In fact, just the other day, I had, uh, two sets of bugs come in. One of them was in fact bedbugs. The other one was not, they were bat bugs. And I only raised, I knew they were bat bugs is because I was able to send them off to K-State and they positively identified them for us. But what's interesting is bedbugs are horrible, right? And you've heard the stories about eradication and all that. Bat bugs are there because of an infestation of bats. Completely different method of control. Because now you've got to call an exterminator to get up into the attic to find the bat population. So without that proper identification, they could have been spraying and trying to control a bug that had no control for because the controller would have been up in the attic. So. So, and all this would not be possible without the hard work and generosity of the Extension Master Gardener Program. A program that naysayers said would not work in our community twenty years ago when it was first started. I had many people say that when I started it. Today, we have forty-five trained volunteers donate annually one hundred and five thousand dollars worth of time and talent putting on these programs, answering these questions, pulling those weeds and planting those plants. They spend ten thousand dollars annually that they personally raise through grants and most notably their annual plant sale. I know several of you attended the plant sale and we appreciate that. And they tend several community gardens, most notably the Turner Community Garden and then also Split Log Farms. So if, uh, you're at, at either one of those two, stop in. And again, their crown jewel is the very popular demonstration garden at the Ag Hall of Fame as well as those flower beds that are out front. Those are actually a demonstration of, uh, a couple of different state-funded programs. So I know I may sound a bit biased, but I know how important the horticulture program is to the community and to you at the Unified Government as it, as is evidenced by our cooperation with the Public Works Department, the Parks Department, Solid Waste Plan and also the Tree Board. So, last but not least, just a real quick brief sentence here. As you have heard, we truly are making a difference in the lives of Wyandotte County citizens, offering educational programs and trained volunteers in every one of the eight Commissioner districts. We are bringing knowledge for life to Wyandotte County. On behalf of the Wyandotte County Extension Council and the people that we serve, we would like to say thank you for all that you do, Mayor, Commissioners and all of the staff here tonight. Collectively, we all make Wyandotte County a wonderful place to call home. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any, um, questions or comments? Commissioner Markley.
So I'm just curious, you showed that pie chart at the beginning that talked about how much of the funding is UG funding versus other funding.
Yes.
Is that fairly consistent? You said there's one of these in every county. Is that consistent with where other county agencies are getting their funding? Or I'm, I'm, I'm interested in, and I'm kind of putting you on the spot.
Right.
I'm wondering if that's.
That's a very good question, Commissioner. And actually, can you go back to that? Because I don't have access to, to go back. There we go. If you'll go to the middle slide, there we go. Yes, it's okay, Commissioner. Um, what would be the most skewed, actually, these numbers probably are not representative of other counties. And the reason being is because, um, the grant funding, we have considerable more grants than a lot of the counties do just because of our size and our, our staff. We've been able to, uh, secure more grant funding than some of the more rural counties do. But then also the other piece of that, that federal funds, and that goes back to, uh, Nozella's discussion about the FNP and the EFNEP, those are actual federal dollars. And so of all of that that's going out to the state, our share is the largest because of the, the greatest need. So to answer your question, if we had a pie chart like that, um, you would not see those two pieces as big in other counties across the state. Now, as far as the amount of money coming from the Unified Government, that would be pretty consistent. In fact, um, if you look at the numbers where the fifth largest, uh, fourth largest county, excuse me, fourth largest county in the state, and I think we end up with like thirteen on the list, if you look at the number of dollars per population that the local government is, is spending on their extension program, we're somewhere around twelve or thirteen on that list.
All right, Commissioner Philbrook.
So the nice lady that's not here that's hunkered down.
Yes.
Is she, is she the lady that does the, uh, soil reports?
Yes.
For the, okay.
Yes. So the way that process is, works, people can bring soil samples into our office and fill out an information sheet and then we package it up. And, uh, we charge twelve dollars and that's basically cost recovery because Kansas State charges us eight dollars and then we have four dollars in postage. And so that gets mailed off to the university. They have a soil testing lab. In about five to seven days, they send back to us the results and then locally she interprets those results, makes local recommendations, sent, uh, puts them up into an envelope and sends them off to the community.
So in other words, if planning and zoning had a concern about how property is being used, we would request them to do a test possibly or not?
Well, not really, Commissioner. What a soil test looks for is soil nutrition. So we test for soil pH and we also test for phosphorus and potassium. Now, the soil testing lab does have the ability to test for other nutrients. So from time to time, we'll do an organic matter test or we'll do a nitrate test or something like that. Those are additional fees.
Okay.
So it's not necessarily, uh, 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 and, and we will have people from time to time come in with a little sample of soil and say, my neighbor sprayed something on my vegetable garden, killed it. Can you tell me what he sprayed? And the answer is no. There are private labs that could, but it, they cost hundreds of dollars to run those tests.
Well, I'm thinking more about land conservancy is what I'm thinking, not necessarily that type of testing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm talking about the types of soils and that sort of thing.
I see. What we can do, they can do a soil textural triangle type test where they tell you, oh, that's a sandy loam or that's a clay loam or something like that. So I have had that been requested before and they can do something like that.
Okay.
And give us some sort of indication of, of, is that a sandy soil, a clay soil or a silty soil?
In other words, appropriate use for that property.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
All right. I don't see any of the questions or comments. Um, thank you all very much for the work that you do every day for our community. And thank you especially for coming in tonight and sharing your good work, not only with us, but with the community.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you all.
All right. We're gonna move now to the second part of our capital maintenance improvement projects. This is a project we started a few weeks ago. Um, there were several questions from the Commissioners, so we have brought it back now for, um, our review. And this is our regular annual review, um, that we do prior to our budget each year. So those sheets will be passed out and I'll turn it over to Mr. Bach.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, after I went through and I apologize that I was not able to be here at our last meeting when we went through CMIP, but I did spend a considerable amount of time going back through and, um, looking at what we had. Uh, looked at some of the questions that were out there in the Commission. Um, if you could advance to the next slide. So I set out an agenda tonight. Uh, there were a lot of questions that kept getting asked about the criteria that we go through and evaluate. And I know we go through that from time to time. Um, and then it probably slips a year or two before we go back through it. So I want to make sure we go through the, uh, the professional environment, or professional analysis that we do and then how those are brought forward to the, uh, governing body. Um, and then we're gonna talk about debt. There were several questions asked about the debt slides that were put up there. Uh, so we've gone back with that with Kathleen and Debbie and run some projections on that into future years. Um, and it's, uh, pretty telling information to get into. And then we, you have the CMIP debt projects that are in front of you. You walked through those pages last week. Um, we have them there again, uh, the CMIP cash projects. I'd actually like to flip through those pages and point some of those changes out to all of you as we didn't have a chance to do that. And then also, we just have the, uh, budget initiative forms that came forward from the public hearings that, uh, we're not really planning to present through those tonight, but just wanted to, Reg, you'll run through just what we have in that regard. So I'm gonna start to go back to the, um, Public Works and Engineering, um, selection process and criteria. And as I said, this is a process where we spend, uh, a, a lot of time that we go throughout the year where staff will work on this. Uh, they go through step-by-step processes from how we use technology or how we use just onsite field inspection to go through this and then eventually end up in front of the governing body. As you all know, we go before the Fall Standing Committee where we spend time in front of that committee saying, these are what we findings are and how we've come up with the selections that we have our recommendations. So with that, I'm gonna turn this over to Mike Tobin, our Interim Public Works Director and, uh, Wayne Moody, our interim county engineer, and, uh, and let those through, walk us through the process and they've been involved in it for a number of years. Gentlemen?
If I could begin, uh, I, I'd like to, to go through a few of the things where the projects may start and then Wayne will follow up and go through the analysis, uh, part of it. Uh, the main criteria that, that we go through is system renewal. And this is the basic maintenance, the grind and overlay projects that you see every year. Uh, the technical analysis is in here and this is where most of the basic maintenance takes place. You'll see examples of this a little bit later and Wayne's flow chart will really explain how this part of it works. Included in that system renewal is traffic and safety analysis. Uh, we go through, uh, continually through the year. As you, most of you have met our traffic engineer, Lydiana. And she's always reviewing accident reports and traffic analysis for every part of the community. Uh, as we get involved in various projects, uh, we will, we will use traffic analysis, uh, not only for repairs, but also maybe for development. We also get a lot of input, um, reference the, the recent survey and phone calls and messages, emails from the citizens, from the elected officials, uh, from, from travelers through our city and also from the businesses and commercial interests in our community. They will come forward and tell us what they think we should do with streets and which ones we should repair, same as anybody else. Included also in the criteria, and, and these are really in no particular order because the federal and state mandates, uh, as you well know, take precedence and they're always expensive. ADA, uh, as Wayne will show you in a few minutes, has, has. ADA, as Wayne will show you in a few minutes, has really placed a burden on the maintenance of our street programs as we included it in there, as we go through and replace the ramps, which leads to even further repair. We also have mandates from EPA and KDHG. Economic development is also a criteria. Reference the Turner Development Program, I'm sorry, Project. A great place where we came in, and as you know, there was a lot of discussion of the upgrade or bridge that took place for a long time, and was brought before you many times. There's also grants. Most of you are familiar. We've gotten a lot of money recently. Our former county engineer, Bill Heatherman, did a real good job of going to MARK and obtaining grants for projects. We also received money from KDOT, and we've received money from the Federal Highway Administration. At this point, I'd like to turn this over to Wayne Moody and let him explain this very complicated slide.
Good evening, and I'd like to, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to actually sit down and develop up this slide. It gave me a chance to reflect on exactly what does it take to put a project together, and what does it take to get it to the point that we can bring it before a board and get your decisions on it and move forward with it. It's complicated. We start off with the identification process. Where is it and what is it? We utilize a lot of mapping tools, CAD, Lucidity, Asset Management, trying to just identify where and what it is. As we move on, we need to know what condition it's in. Mostly, these are street projects that you might hear me talking about, since that is my major focus. But we do this for all of our capital maintenance, CMIP projects, resurfacing roadways, bridges, sidewalks, storm sewers, traffic signal improvements. Basically, it's the same model throughout the entire system. Once we know what it is and where it is, what condition it's in, we sit down and try and determine what records do we have on it. There's a lot of maintenance that goes on, on an annualized basis with utilities and with the Street Department. And we need to know what was done out there, when it was done, and who did it. All of that comes together in a records review. The need evaluation is important, is all that data that we collect, we try to sit down and look at it in a whole, as a whole, to make sure that what we think we want to do is going to answer the problems that were presented to us in the project. The economic analysis is, of course, critical. We need to know, you know, everything there is to know about area growth, the economic development, traffic patterns, outside organizations that may be developing in the area. We're looking for funding options. What grants are available? The priority ranking of projects is always a professional judgment item. It tends to get typically done with multiple internal and external sources. We have consultants that come in occasionally on projects, and we'll review what it is that we think we want to do with them and get their input also. The programming and budget, of course, that's the process, the CMIP process that we develop sheets for that gets these to become line items on a proposed budget to you. And of course, then we bring that to you as a board and as a standing committee in our proposals for everything that we do, whether that be a citywide project, or whether that be in a council district and a specialized project. We try to make sure that what we have come up with is what the governing body wants.
Thank you, guys. Really, this was to set out to walk through this. I heard that question asked several times about what's the criteria we use in evaluating the streets. So, these first several points are all those that are done by staff. Unfortunately, we get down to the programming and budgeting side of the time, and when these guys come through, I won't necessarily have all the money. They want to do all the street projects that they're looking for. But then it is a coupling of comparison of what programming can leverage money that makes sense when we build these forward, but also those that just are in need, and we have to move them forward to get the projects done. So, that's why we wanted to lay this out. I probably could step, you can leave it on that slide for a minute. I don't know if there's any Commissioners have any questions on this process? I did want to say about the Standing Committee review. And for the last couple of years, we've consistently done these in two review cycles. We do one in October, one in November. So, it's not a, it's not a guest date, and if we need to do more emphasis to get the entire Commission to that meeting, you know, in October, we really look, like in October of fifteen, we looked at, what are we doing in sixteen? So, we go through that session. It's focused on what are the upcoming projects that we're going to be, we're going to kick off and go. We've already approved those in funding. They're moving forward and showing those. Then we move to the November Standing Committee meeting. That's the one where we're going to come in and talk about what are the future year projects. So, we're looking at seventeen, eighteen, the next five-year plan. And, you know, I think if the questions are out there about how we line that up, that's probably an emphasis that we do. It could still be in that Standing Committee structure, but all of you should know that's coming up in that November meeting. And that would be a good one for all the Commissioners probably to attend, or if you're wanting to weigh in a little bit more at that point, you know, that, we might want to look at that structure a little bit more, and that may be able to assist you in getting more input as we're developing that long period.
I think, I think the Standing Committee process has been helpful. I would say I think the questions that came up last meeting were mostly about things that came up between November and now, so they wouldn't have been something that we would have been looking at in November, because it just wasn't really on the radar at that point. So, I don't think that the questions that came up were a reflection on that being a bad process. They're just a lot that happens between November and June.
Yeah, so, thank you very much. The criteria is very helpful. Did your department send this presentation out to all of the Commissioners? The dead list of the criteria?
It has.
You'd pull it up on your phone.
Okay. Did we just get that, or did you send it?
Yeah, you just did. We would have got it out a little earlier, but we were otherwise detained. I had Rocky send it out, probably a little about five o'clock.
Okay. All right, that's okay. I just want to make sure I got it, so I have a record of what the criteria is. So, I'm curious, out of all the infrastructure projects in Wyandotte County that meet this criteria, what percentage of those total projects make it to the budget? I'm asking for, obviously, you probably don't have specifics.
I don't have that figure. I couldn't even guess.
You know, maybe, one example, as I can go, I did pull off to run through this next thing, just on streets resurfacing, which shows you how dramatic our need is, and streets is a pretty high profile, and it might kind of answer your question.
Right. So, that's fine. I'll let you move ahead, but this is what I'm getting at, maybe as we go along, if you can think of an answer to my question. As we go through it, that would be helpful. So, the criteria that I'm interested in is that we have enormous infrastructure needs here in Wyandotte County. Enormous. And I think this is a very professional and very acceptable criteria. But my question really is, is that we, since we have so many infrastructure projects that meet this criteria, and we have so little money, how, what's the criteria or the policy in which we determine what projects actually make it into the budget?
Well, I think that...
I think you're look...
I think you're looking at it, that box that says priority ranking, that the staff does a professional ranking of the most important ones based on their professional evaluation that's shown up there, and then they put them in priority order. This is number one for all these reasons. This is number two for all these reasons. And then when it comes to crafting a budget, if we have forty million dollars' worth of needs, and we have ten million dollars' worth of money, you take the ten million dollars and lay it over the top priorities, and those are the ones that come in first. And then we get involved when that budget comes to us, and we see where that priority is, because things leapfrog one another. Something goes bad that make, for whatever reason, makes it a higher... We might receive a grant for it. It might go bad in a hurry. It might get washed out, that we have to do something sooner, and it moves up the priority ranking. And that's where we see in this program, the five-year outlay, and how things get moved back. And that's why when it's a change, you get it in a box, and it moves it. So, this has been a very transparent process from day one. I like this chart. But the, it's always been that the staff does a priority ranking, evaluating all these criteria, and then presents it to us to look at. And then our job is to evaluate, was, is, does this look like a reflection of our priorities? And is it the amount of money we can afford to spend? Because if we gave them more money, which they would take today, they would do more priorities, right?
Correct.
So, this is how, this is how this process has gone forward for a long time.
I just guess I didn't realize that the level of the assessment went to the level of detail you're suggesting. My history with the Public Works and all of our departments is their professional assessments. For example, they have a one-to-four number, and let's just say, number one, there are several number ones. There are several number twos. There are several threes. Not, I mean, actually, that's impressive if we go to the level of detail where we're actually determining, this is a number-one project, this is a number-two, this is number-three. Do we go to that level of detail in our priority ranking?
Yes, and in addition to that, Commissioner, there's also those other factors that I went through that can alter those. We might, a project that might come up as a number-one priority, the engineers may realize that there's a potential a couple of years out for this to be in the MARK program. So, it might sit and wait for that, for a federal grant to come in. Or, if we, all of a sudden, a different economic development project moves up, that project might move ahead of something else in order to capture that for the benefit of the whole community.
Okay, thank you. That's great to know.
I wanted to point out that the sheets that we've passed out, there's a priority column over on the left. So, you can see those priority numbers on the projects.
I wanted to, if you go to the next slide, just take a moment to kind of underline. If you just take a look at the streets, we maintain a little over eleven-hundred centerline miles of roadway. Our cycle for this was to put everything in, has been, or we used to be years ago, to have everything on a thirty-year lifecycle, and that we're touching everything once every thirty years. Now, that's not a lot of times, as you come through and think about how many years between you might have saw that truck working out on your street. And obviously, there's some that we have to touch more in that because of the high traffic wave, but that's kind of the average to go over the whole city. So, that means we need to do thirty-nine miles annually. In the last five years, we've only been able to do nineteen. So, quickly, by dropping that much, put us on a fifty-six-year lifecycle. That's really an unacceptable number to get to, and we don't really have the answer for it. But I will demonstrate by the next slide to show you just where we're going with this. So, the bar graph in the gray shows you the amount of funding we've been putting to our streets over the years. And our number here really hasn't dropped off a lot. But you can see the major difference on how many centerline miles from back in two thousand when we used, you know, less than two million dollars and did forty-five miles. And that number jumps up and down based on the types of projects we were able to do and work through it. But the clear pattern that Mr. Tobin, Mr. Moody pointed out to you is since we've had to take on a few other things, and that being ADA ramps, our complete streets, which are better for our community, better for the long run, but the same dollar's not going to cover as many lane miles. So, you know, we, as we moved into that program, it's kind of dropped us down. And as we're looking ahead to this year, we're projecting that our two-point, I think it's about two-point-six, seven million dollars is going to do a little over twenty-one miles, which is well below what we need to, to be on our thirty-year pace. So, we, the next colorful graph on the side just indicates that projecting in 2017, in the way this budget's built out, I haven't built, add in any additional debt. The gray is all the debt area that comes up to it. Actually, tried to drop that off a little bit that's going towards streets, but added in the color, the kind of purplish color is cash that would go to it. That gets us to about twenty-six. That's not on here. The red number indicates where we would have to be if we wanted to get up to that thirty-nine, forty centerline miles. So, we're, we're a long ways from where we would need to get to, to be on that pattern. And I can't sit here today and say, "Yes, we got everything in place. We'll be able to commit to keep going." But you can see where we try to move the purple line up every year. And really, what this does is moves from, you know, it moves from somewhere around twenty-six to thirty centerline miles in what's, what I'm looking at from a cash perspective. But I'm so a long ways from getting there in the red. The other thing that you all need to think about is this, this budget, as I'm building it, projects going forward to say, "Okay, we're still issuing the same amount of debt as we did previously, and then adding cash to it to try to catch up on the streets." Now, as we go into the next part of the presentation, that's important to note, because I think, and I believe Commissioner Markley, you might have noted this a little bit specifically, that what can we do to lower our debt? Because our obligations for that in the coming years mean we have to increase our millage to pay for that debt. And we're already obligated to get to it, and we're going to be more to that every year that we continue to issue debt going forward. So, I just point that out, that we could move a trend to say, "Well, we're just going to baseline. We're not going to issue any more debt. In fact, we're going to issue less debt and put our cash to that." Right now, I'm moving in a perspective of maintaining the debt where we're at and adding, and where we have cash, spending more from that perspective to add to the overall number of projects. Okay, so, this chart, a lot of questions about where, where street resurfacing has been done. This shows the last fifteen years. Wayne, I don't know if you have any comments on this?
If, if you look at it, it looks like we've done a lot, but really, that represents about thirty to thirty-five percent of the streets in Wyandotte County. And that's a fifteen-year cycle, thirty-five percent. It's amazing. It was fun to put together, to look and see where all we've been.
Okay, so, the next chart, and this is the one that Debbie usually presents, I'm going to go ahead and talk about today.
I just have one question about the map.
Okay.
So, are the, are the blue lines, are the blue lines on that map all the street resurfacing that's been done from two thousand to two thousand and fifteen?
Basically, all the street resurfacing that's been done in that time period for neighborhood streets and for our arterial and collectors. There are some streets that, that have been rebuilt with grant funds, and that they're not shown as part of that.
So, you could assume that everything that's not, everything that's a city street that is not highlighted right there has not been resurfaced in fifteen years?
That is correct.
And we're on a fifty-six-year cycle?
Right now.
It's not the same as the state?
Hal Walker had me looking at south of the river last meeting. And the last time in Hal's particular neighborhood, and right there around his neighborhood, it was back beyond two thousand that I was there. It was about twenty to twenty-five years ago.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's just, when you just look south of the river, there seems to be, just at a glance, significantly less road resurfacing period over the last fifteen years than, than other urban neighborhoods. I recognize when you look at east of six-thirty-five, and you get further out, that infrastructure's fairly new already.
Correct.
But, for example, if you look up off County Line Road in the Rosedale community, there is a huge chunk of ground that hasn't been resurfaced in fifteen years.
That's, that is correct. They are out in twenty-five and thirty years, some of them. And right now, we're on about a fifty-nine-year cycle.
I think one thing, because I noted that too, Commissioner, when we were looking at this map, I think, and I think it could hit different areas in different ways. I think we had a major resurfacing... I think we had a major resurfacing project down through all that area about, at about the twenty-year mark. And that's why it's not kind of like spread out, isn't that what you were going through, that Wayne?
That is correct.
A whole bunch of streets in that one area went down and focused and did that. We're so, historically, you find things like that, that out when we have people like Wayne on our staff that can tell us, well, this is what we did at that point, we hit this, this part. But not to say that's still well over fifteen years ago since that area was untouched.
Typically, I, I think in Highland Crest, I think I was in there and I did every street in Highland Crest in one pass in one year. And I, I find it hard at today's budgeting and today's cost to continue to do that. I'd love to do it. Mayor Holland was right, give me the money.
Okay, I'm going to move on to debt. And this is a, a little bit of a modification in the slide, tried to do this to, to help answer your question. So what you see that's different on here is, one, it's spread out all the way to twenty twenty-six. So we've done a projection forward from where we, where we used to be. I'm going to just walk up there. So the, the purple line is the line that you're looking at, and that was the question you had about, what we've already obligated in the GO notes, so that's noted on here, the temporary notes that are already issued on this. By, so taking a look at all the temporary notes we've already done, we'll start to issue those into bonds in seventeen, we'll start to get some debt there, we'll issue more coming here and then come out here, and it'll flow all the way down here, don't shine that in my eyes. That, that gives us that opportunity to, to see that just by what we've already committed to, we're looking at well above our target line without issuing any more debt. Okay? And I'm going to talk about that a little bit more to just understand what that means to us as far as a commitment from a tax dollar. Then as we go forward from that point, assuming we continue to issue about fifteen million dollars a year in debt, that's this graph, this part here, that they'll start to come out, we'll start to make debt service, and that'll grow. And you can see, we kind of, so going up through twenty twenty-three, we continue to grow because we don't have as much debt falling off. And then it starts to fall off in each year and there, and we kind of stay in more of a balance pattern from that point forward. But the unfortunate reality is, it's taken us, we're on an upward trend, starting next year, all the way to twenty twenty-three as far as servicing, well, at least, I'd say at least committed to twenty twenty. Any questions on the way this is done?
Does that assume that our revenues stay the same?
It's a good question, and I think I can address that based on this next slide, so let's go ahead and hit that. So what I, what I had Debbie do was take this and say, let's do an estimate based on what we think the revenues would be. So here we are at, currently, for our GO debt, we have appropriated toward that sixteen point six mils. So that covers what we need to do in twenty sixteen, assuming a two and a half percent increase. And we've been working back and forth on this, we thought we were hovering a little closer to four percent, but we have some outstanding things and Debbie's backed it off. We're looking at, we're probably looking at sixteen point nine to cover twenty seventeen. So if we stay on a two and a half percent growth rate, and we just ran this through twenty twenty, you can see our millage needs to go to seventeen six, seventeen nine, up to eighteen point six. So that's two mils different than it is today. And that's, that's by a two and a half percent. Now, I looked at that and said, well, what if we ran it four and a half, five percent down here? And if we run that level, then if we have a five percent growth rate in the community, you know, we're only three, four tenths more. So there is that opportunity to grow it at a high, or to not have to have the mills to commit to it at much more if our community continues to go up in evaluation.
Just for, just for clarity, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, that we have more than one option within government. We have more than just the option of raising people's property taxes. We could grow our community. And when we say that, that means recruiting new homeowners and bringing more business to the county and broadening our tax base, correct?
Yeah, and that's what, if you're looking at two and a half or five percent, I mean, that, that encompasses various things. That, that doesn't have anything to do with a, a mill rate growth. I just said if we grew at five percent, this is the amount of millage it would take to offset that number. So if we add homes, the value of our property goes up, you know, that, that all attributes to the five percent.
And what's the average growth rate of a city?
Well, I can bring that back to you at a, at a future budget meeting, but, yeah, we have that, that information.
We haven't been growing that much in the past couple of years, I mean, we've been fairly flat. I mean, back in two thousand and five, we were seeing over five hundred housing starts a year. You know, we're around that hundred and seventy-five mark, you know, in the last year, two years. So, you know, we move up to that, and that kind of rippled across into other areas where we move into the, you know, the commercial side. And that obviously brings in a lot bigger development. We have a few TIPS out there, and that also accounts that those get through our IRB and it gets through a, a ten-year cycle and they start dropping off. And we do see those dropping off.
So I actually did that graph for the last ten years, the assessed value and how it's grown. And I did notice that in the last two years, it has been growing at a, at a grayer, greater growth rate than the prior years.
I, I appreciate what you're saying, I'm not talking about assessed value growing and the valuation of the property growing. I'm talking about what's the average growth rate as far as broadening our tax base, bringing in new business and bringing in new housing, adding to our tax base. Not appraised value and not mill levy going up.
Oh, well, no, and I am talking about assessed value, and that's what that is, assessed value.
So assessed value is a measure of what, of what you're mentioning, as opposed to appraised value?
We're not going to get to five percent growth in assessed value without economic development.
Right, yeah.
Where if we just, this graph doesn't just assume assessed value going up, or the, the, what we already have gaining in value. If we're going to get to that five percent, we have to continue our very aggressive economic development that's putting new, commercial, retail, and residential facilities in the ground to actually grow our tax base, which when, and I address this very strongly in my State of the Government, if we're going to grow the tax base, we're going to do that in four ways. One, we have to address our tax rate, which is counterintuitive because lowering our tax rate means we don't collect as much tax revenue to build streets. But we also need to do economic development and grow economic development, grow houses, housing starts, grow commercial. We also need to address the blight. Reducing blight in our community can grow the property values around it. It's, it's hard to measure how much one boarded-up crack house on a city block deteriorates the property values of the entire city block. Aggressively addressing blight, the money we spend in addressing blight's going to grow our valuation of what's already there. And then economic development is adding more things to it. So that's the multifaceted strategy. If we're going to get to five percent growth, we're going to have to be very aggressive in blight reduction, very aggressive in economic development in order to get to the, to get to those goals. I have Commissioner Bindham and then Commissioner McKeonan.
I just wanted to ask a question for clarity, kind of based on what Commissioner Murgia is asking, which your question, Commissioner, was, what's the average growth? And my question for clarity for me is, based on measuring what? Because if I heard that question, I would think based on assessed valuation. Or is it based on how much we collect? Or is it some combination of both?
Probably break that out.
Because we might add something, residential, retail, or commercial, or industrial, that adds value, but might be paying either no tax or lesser tax. So that's why I'm asking for clarification on what we're talking about.
Well, we, and we do have it by new growth versus, or we can break it out by new growth versus what's increased value of existing property. Now, sometimes it gets a little gray when you're working on an existing property that does improvements and adds on. But typically, we can see a lot of that too and can break that number out.
So just along the lines with what Commissioner Bindham was asking me, what I'm talking about, and thanks for clarifying, is I want to know how many new property tax dollars we're bringing in every year. I want to know how that compares to other cities of our size.
Well, and I'll, and I'll say too, from the other direction, the decision ten years ago by the state legislature to take away machinery and equipment tax. Machinery and equipment tax, if you look at our total valuation, assessed city valuation of nine hundred and eighty-five, that's almost a billion dollars. We were at one point two billion. And they took off two hundred million dollars in assessed value off of the tax rolls to a point where we lost almost twenty percent of the total valuation of our city with one act of the Kansas Legislature. So it's going to take, to get back to one point two, it's going to take us until twenty twenty at a five percent growth rate to get, to recover from a decision in the Kansas Legislature that really did more to hurt the ability to pave streets in our city than anything else. Because when you take twenty percent, that's an enormous dollar number, out of the total value of our city, it's, it, this projection at a, at a five percent growth rate, it's going to take us all those years to recover to where we were before they made that decision. And so not only do you have growth trajectories, you also have hurt. The other thing we lost during the oh eight, oh nine housing crisis, we lost about twenty, another twenty percent of the total valuation of our city just from the national real estate crisis. We've regrown a lot of that. The good news is, the Legends, for instance, if you take the Village West area out west, that area represents about ten percent of the total valuation of our city. That's a ten percent add in total valuation to our city in the last fifteen years. So we've added a ten percent with the Village West development. We've lost twenty percent due to the Kansas Legislature, another twenty percent to a national recession. And you can see that it's going to take a five percent to get back where we were. So it's not just that we haven't been growing, we've been growing aggressively. And in fact, the statistics statewide show that we're one of the fastest-growing communities in terms of adding new tax dollars to our rolls in the entire state. We're one of the fastest-growing. And yet, there are other international and state factors that are costing us valuation. So if we were, if everyone would leave us alone and we could grow at five percent, we could get back to where we were ten years ago. That's assuming the Kansas Legislature doesn't have any new good ideas. Okay, Commissioner McKeonan.
Well, I think Commissioner Murgia makes a really good point, as, as does Commissioner Bindham here. There's two ways to raise, to raise assessed value. You can increase the assessment on what's already here, or you can add new residential and commercial structures that pay taxes. And I think what Commissioner Murgia is asking is, can we get some sort of a breakdown about those that are new paying taxes versus just an increase in the assessed value of what's already here? Because I think we already know that our citizens are already strapped because we have a relatively high rate on low value because we have to create this budget. And we have a citizenry that makes relatively less per capita than other areas in the community. So we all pay relatively more. What we need to do is add more commercial and residential structures that pay taxes. And for me, that's the key phrase, that pay taxes. So I think it says to us, we need to consider some of our economic development incentives. Do we want to put, how much do we want to put off for ten years? Can we put off ninety percent rather than ninety-five percent and still get that development to happen? And I don't know the answer, I'm just throwing out. I think that wanting to grow our assessed value by new stuff causes us to rethink how we incent those new developments so that we can begin to recover a little bit more of that increase in value, maybe a little bit earlier. And one of the things that I've been asking Doug for is, we say, we had three hundred and sixty million dollars of economic development last year. And my question is, well, how much of that translated to the bottom line? How much do we get in the general fund from that three hundred and sixty million dollars of economic development? Was it thirty-six thousand dollars? I, I don't know. And I'd love to know that, because I think that helps to sharpen our focus on, are we making the progress that we need to make? And just one last thing, and then I'll shut up, and this really is for Kathleen. We're assuming here that we're going to continue, that even if our assessed value goes up in the way we're talking about it, we're still going to issue debt. Couldn't we take that increase in assessed value, eliminate the interest payments from bond and interest, and simply increase our cash and blunt the increase of that light blue
Yes.
over there?
Yes.
So we're, we're making an assumption that we're going to continue to issue debt, and that we've got to raise these mills to catch up with our debt. But if we can grow the assessed value, we don't have to issue as much debt. We start paying cash for stuff.
Right, and, and you have a couple of options with this even. I mean, one is, as we look forward to say, as I was talking about the streets program, you can say, well, let's, don't overall increase the amount of streets we hit. Let's keep it at that level and we're only going to increase on cash. So put the cash in place of where we were. Or take cash and put it away into the debt reserve fund for, into the debt reserve fund. So when we hit eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, and I'm saying, I need another half mil or I need a mil, well, if I've got a million dollars in that account that's waiting, that's in fund balance, you know, each of those years, that's another option to avoid that while we're looking at the growth of our community to catch up.
And, and here's the multiplying effect too, to your point. Without the Cerner Towers and the soccer stadium, we wouldn't be seeing the luxury apartments at Village West that are market rate, unsubsidized and unincentivized by our community. You know, we did IRBs, but they're paying a pilot rate for the hundred percent of their taxes. So how do you quantify the impact of that Cerner development and the soccer stadium and the dairy farmers vis a vis the new, and now after those two developments, six hundred units by North Point, we're getting another fifty million dollar luxury apartment development at the Legends because of the strong office growth? So the dairy farmers will have a ten-year abatement. That development helps us drive additional luxury apartments that is immediate dollars onto the tax rolls and raises the property values of every piece of property around it, which shows growth in our assessed value. So economic development works two ways. One, how many dollars do you put in to the ground and actually comes back in taxes? How many people who get those jobs live in our community and are turning those dollars over, which is why residency for jobs is so critical? And the third is, what does it do to the value around it and other economic incentives that we gain because of it? So it's a matrix, it's hard to quantify. I think we could put some numbers to it to get an idea of the direct benefit, because we can measure the direct benefit. And then we need to think about what is the indirect benefit that grows our bottom line as well? All right, Commissioner Markley.
So I really just want to make a clarification. Last time when we were here and you said mill rate increase, like, my eyes got wide and I kind of freaked out for a minute. And then I understood what you were saying. So I just want to clarify it for anybody who, like me, just shut their brain off when they heard mill rate increase. So when we say mill rate increase, we're saying we would have to increase the number of mills we put toward paying debt. Not necessarily that we would have to increase the mill rate. And I want to say that because if there is anybody locked in their basement right now watching this because they're bored, I want them to understand that this chart doesn't say we have to increase our taxes in two years. It just says we would have to increase the amount of our tax dollars that was going toward paying our debt. And once my eyes stopped widening last time, I got that and understood, so.
That is a very
Thank you for your patience.
That is a very important clarification, Commissioner. Thank you for making that very clear.
And, and that's, and that's exactly what, in listening to that conversation, what I wanted to make sure and clarify to you all, so we understood what our obligation was financially and how that correlated to mills, but not necessarily that we would be bumping that up.
I do have a question about then, so, for example, on economic development projects. I, I usually don't get into this level of the, of the weeds, I sort of rely on you and our staff to figure it out. But then it would seem to me that a good use of our debt would be to fund economic development projects. to fund economic development projects. Wouldn't it be a better use of our debt financing?
There's, we do a lot of economic development investment with debt financing through infrastructure. So when you look at, for instance, the, we're going to see the Turner Diagonal development tonight. There, that project, that bridge was way back on the priority list. Nobody was worried about that bridge. Then an economic development opportunity comes to bring jobs and new facility to our community, and that rascal jumped to number one. So that, that's a perfect example to where we would issue debt to fund infrastructure to grow jobs. Now, I would support that 100%. I would be hesitant to issue debt to give to cash incentives, to pay cash incentives. I think the projects have to pay for themselves. So you could incentivize through property tax, sales tax, other means that we currently use to incentivize investment, other than just cash, giving cash to a company, debt financing cash.
But, but wait a minute, Mayor. You lost me at the part where you said that you would not be interested in issuing debt for incentives. If in the
Cash incentives.
Yeah, okay. So just go with that for a minute. So what if we did, I'm not saying we should, I'm just thinking it out. But what if we did issue cash incentives through debt? At the end of the day, if the, whatever the economic development project is generates more revenue, whether through sales tax or property tax, than what we were receiving to begin with, why does it matter if it's debt or not?
Well, if you're going to give a property tax incentive, which we do all the time with tax increment financing, and you're going to give a property tax incentive, so the property currently generates $5,000 in taxes, and after it's done, it's going to generate $100,000 in taxes, you have $95,000 delta through tax increment financing that we can drive back into a project.
Talk slower, just talk slower.
Okay. So if you're going to take the delta of property tax increase and drive it back into a project, often, that incentive that we give for property tax goes to the infrastructure of the project to make the project happen. So in effect, we are doing what you're asking. We do issue debt to incentivize economic development, but it's always on the infrastructure side. Because we, I don't think we could sell general obligation bonds against, it's a different kind of bond that you sell that's based on different kind of tax structure. So this general obligation debt, so if you go back to the previous slide, you can go back to the previous slide. If you look under TIF, there, on 2016, it's the third column, we have $1.9 million in debt payments that are in tax districts. All of those, that's all economic development incentive in the TIF dollars. So we are currently spending $2 million a year in tax payments for economic development projects that those projects are paying the bill on. The residents aren't paying the bill on that, the project itself is paying the bill. So if you, if you think about it that way, about 10% of our total debt load there, between that and the GO bonds, we absolutely invest heavily in economic development. So all of that TIF dollars, economic development money. And then you have the other revenue funds, which is largely our sewer fund, which is our favorite fund in the city, because we love sewers. And it's very important that our toilets flush. I had no idea how expensive it was to flush my toilet, but I'm very, I tell my kids to give thanks every time they flush their toilet when it works. But we do spend 10, we spend $2 million a year in debt payment on economic development. I guess that's my point.
Well, isn't that also include general obligation bonds?
No, the GO is on top in the yellow, see the very top line?
But don't we, aren't the general obligation, isn't that issuing debt?
Yes, that's, that's $19 million, and that's for streets. Those are for streets that don't have economic development on it, that's just our freight. And then the $1.9 million are tied to economic development.
So my, so what I want to know then is, how much money do we issue in debt approximately annually for economic development? Do you know that?
Not offhand.
Okay, because to me, $2 million, a $2 million investment in debt issuance in economic development seems like not enough. That's why I'm asking.
That's the payment. Explain the difference between the payment and
Yeah, that's what you're seeing, that's the amount of payment we're making each year. And of course, as the mayor was saying, that the TIF line, that's money that's coming from some project source. And we're not taking that from our mill rate. So that, all the money that's on that TIF line item says that we're collecting that money from within an economic development site in order to make that $2 million annual payment.
How much debt does that represent? What's $2 million annual payment representing debt?
Boy, we'd have to get back to
Well, is it roughly $20 million, $25 million?
Yeah.
So 20 to 25 million dollars in debt, that's a $2 million annual debt payment for economic development.
Well, you can look at it that way, or you can look at it as $25 million, that's the current total debt load or annual debt?
For TIF, and a total for TIF.
So, you know, TIF, so TIF stands for, you know, tax increment financing, right? So basically, what they're, when we issue a TIF, you're looking at the base tax rate, right? And if you build in that infrastructure to support the project, the economic development project, you know, you need that, those dollars to build that infrastructure. You issue the, the bonds, and the repayment of the bonds is solely based on the assumption or estimate that, given that economic development activity, the tax base or revenue source will grow. And that growth is applied towards the repayment of the TIF bonds.
So let me just make it really easier, because it's, it's very complicated, not only for me, but I'm sure I can't be the only one that it's complicated for. So this is all I would say, is that, to Commissioner Markley's comment, as we issue more debt, then our debt payment goes up, which is going to require, which is going to give us less money, less cash money to spend on other things. So I would just say, I agree with the fact that we should be spending cash on those things, in my opinion, that we would not necessarily be getting a return on investment on, and spending more debt on projects that have a return on their investment over time. So what I am curious about is how much, do you see what I'm saying, Doug?
No, I, I do. The unfortunate comparison goes back to the slides that I did before this, when I talked about street centerline miles. I mean, we
I'm not saying doing it overnight.
We have to spend the money to do our infrastructure.
Right.
And I think that's, there's no return on paving the street out, 7th Street, other than the fact that people can't live in the city. So we've got to spend the money on our infrastructure, and I think you understand that. So the emphasis to go out and say, "Okay, if we want to do more debt, or a chunk of our debt to leverage more in other projects," I understand the philosophy that you're, you're bringing forward with that.
I just don't want our commissioners, especially those that are newer, I don't want them to be completely anti-debt. Especially if the project coming forward, if, yeah, is saying, "We're not issuing any more debt because we're not going to be able to make the payment." My concern is that if we bring projects forward that have the, even the potential, especially in, I mean, obviously, the projects out in Village West are going to grow and broaden our tax base. But if we're going to grow other areas of our city, we have to be willing to take chances at growing the tax base. So I just don't want them to be so caught up in debt that they, because we'll never grow anyplace except western Wyandotte County if that's the case.
All right, anything else on this, Commissioner Bindam?
I just wanted to know, Mayor and Mr. Box, are we going to need another session on CMIP? Since this is great, and it's really educational for me, but we haven't looked at any of this.
Well, we have, we, we started 15 minutes late on this meeting because of the storm and needing to get people here. We are going to need about 15 minutes to turn the cameras downstairs. I would say we have about 10 minutes that we can, because we've already had a first blush at this, so I think we know kind of where we're headed. I would offer two things. One, if there's something that we feel like is a discussion that we want to have for the whole commission, let's do that and identify those now. I think there's also, very helpful, if you have particular questions, to take those to Mr. Boxstaff directly. And there might be a lot of individual questions that could be asked, answered on a one-on-one basis that we don't necessarily need to cover as the whole group. But one of the things that would be helpful is, as those individual questions come forward, a summary sheet could be given to all of us if there are, if there are things that come up in that that we need to spend more time on.
So why don't I try this, Mayor? Since you walked through the debt projects last time, and I don't want to say that there aren't additional comments that people might want to talk on it, but I would ask Debbie, if, why don't we jump to the cash sheets that you handed out tonight, and at least flip through those pages and talk about what's new from last year's budget? Because there's a lot of different things that are added here or put in place, and that way, we'll, we can present all that to you, and then kind of have it highlighted, and we can go back to questions on that. So why don't you step through those?
Okay. I just want to say, in your packet, you did get another copy of the debt finance projects, but that has not changed from the copy that you got from our meeting on the 5th. There are a few changes to the cash projects, and as we go through, as I go through them, I'll note which ones have changed from the copy that you got at the last meeting. So we'll start out with the, on the first page is the City General Fund. Once again, everything that is highlighted in red is a change from the previous year. And if it's a new project, a new amount that's come on to the CMIP that hasn't been in there before, that amount is marked as new. So there's several new, new projects that are in, that are, that are listed on that first page. Let's see, we'll start with, there's new street lighting updates. Now, we don't have an amount in there. I think that's a project that maybe if there, we need some clarification, Mike could explain that.
As a point of discussion, we are involved with a study, joint study with BPU, evaluating our streetlights and what it would take to light the entire county as, as a project involving the new type of lights that were installed down here as part of the demonstration project.
LED.
LED lights, and, excuse me. Also, there's a unique opportunity, as presented itself, that we're exploring, that an outside company may, in fact, be willing to finance those streetlights. And so we're working on that right now, and that's between Bill Johnson and his staff at BPU and our engineering staff.
So a couple of other new items. There are a couple improvements for the headquarters fire station, as well as under, at the bottom of the page, under urban planning, we've got the revised zoning code and northeast master plan in there for 17 and 18. On the next page is the parks, consolidated parks. We've got the ADA playground. We have the $100,000 in there. We have taken the designation from the casino, the $100,000 that went to parks, and we've applied that to the ADA playground for 2017. Under the County General Fund, there's a couple new projects for the annex parking improvements and the election parking. And also under the Parks and Rec, under the County General Fund, there's a master plan implementation. On the third page, we have the police animal shelter. There's a combination of a study and then facility expansion. We put money in 2017 for a study, and then future dollars out if needed for an expansion. We've also added, under the Parks and Rec, there's an amount in there for the Joe EMIO Argentine Community Center. That is one of the amounts that has changed from your previous copy that was added since the meeting. Under the public works section, we don't have any new items, but under the street resurfacing, the neighborhood street resurfacing and neighborhood street repair, in our last meeting, we had talked about how we had shifted some additional costs, but they weren't in debt, they were in cash. This is where those show up in the dedicated sales tax fund. On the next page, we're now going to some of the other special revenue funds. So we've got Special Parks Fund. We've got a couple of projects there for the Wyandotte County Lake and Wyandotte County Park. We put in, under the Special Asset Fund, the Reardon Center improvements. This was money that was allocated from the sale of the hotel for improvements at the Reardon Center. Then the final section there is the sewer system and all the changes. They've got several new projects related to their CSO projects. And finally, on the last page, at the bottom, we've added a new section for the Fairfax Industrial Area TDD Fund. And we've got $100,000 annually starting in 2018.
And I'll just clarify on that. That's, as you recall, we did the, when we did the project area down there, right next to the General Motors Plant, that used to be the old Brownfield Site. We established a TDD that would go back to the entire Fairfax area, so it's designated to that. And now that we have the project that's advancing on the site, that's what we're projecting out. And I know we had a request from the Fairfax Industrial Association for a few hundred thousand. We still have the money in debt that's over there. But looking forward to it, this is an opportunity for us to add money into this whole area. And we haven't specified what the project is, but it is dedicated, and it has to be within the service, the Fairfax area. So we're projecting that in 18, that would be there to, to start to utilize and allocate. Yeah, from economic development, yeah. I mean, that project is on the agenda tonight. It's an 850,000 square foot facility that is being spec-built going forward, because we don't know what's going in there.
Not in a public meeting place, so. Commissioner Bindam?
I just have a request that will help me, and I felt this way walking all the way through the facet study as well. And I think included in the facet study, there's a big map where all the fire stations are located. I don't know where Fire Station 10 is. I know where my fire station, you know, near my house is. I would really appreciate addresses, both on that map in that study and in here. When we talk about Station 10 and Station 2, can I just be given, what's the address of that station? It just helps orient me. And I'm asking for it here and also on the big map in the study. I'll bet somebody can do it.
And when we look at that study, you might realize that the facet study may have failed today, because we're all over the place, downlines and everything else. So when we look at those studies, we're going to, we have to remind ourselves that we could be in a situation like we are today.
Okay, Commissioner Mergia.
Yeah, so I have, and I just need direction on how to proceed with this. So I want to talk about the Argentine Rec Center. I realize it's in the budget for 2017, but I view it as an economic development project, and it's been on the back burner since September of last year. And if we wait till '17, that small business, local operator will have waited a year and a half before they can even begin to move on that project. So I guess what I'm asking for is, I'd like to see that project move to this fall or later this summer in the '16 budget. Yeah, so at some point, I want to talk about that. And then I just, if you, I'll stop there, but I also just have one small question about one of these line items. Want me to go on?
Sure.
Okay. So the casino parks designation, the $100,000 for the ADA playground. I'm not against that project at all, but it just seems odd to me that our Park and Recreation Department budget continues to dwindle down, and now they have this, this is an annual appropriation to them, correct? So they'll get it every year.
Yeah, that's how we have it laid out. If you see right above that line where it says Casino Parks Designation Future Projects, and then, then you get up to 2018, so that's kind of unallocated. So what we did was, you showed where we have the $75,000 in 2016, that's there toward the YMCA. We put the other $25,000 toward operational costs this year. And then next year, year, as a way to make the ADA program work.
So, is, I guess, is that a recommendation by the park and rec department? Do they wanna spend $100,000 on this very specific playground? Is that their recommendation? Is that staff's recommendation?
Yes.
Oh, well, all right then.
I mean, it's staffs, along with the direction from the governing body, as we've talked about the ADA playground, about finding ways to work toward it.
There's a little bit of a difference here. So, the Parks and Rec Department, the budget, from what I've seen, continues, or has gone down since I've been here, and we keep moving stuff to the Parks and Rec Department to manage, so we give them less money and we give them more stuff to do. And then, when they don't do it right, you know, I mean, they do a good job, but when they don't do it right, then people will complain about it. So, I just would think that they would, that the staff would wanna spend that $100,000 on maintenance and things like that. But if not, and they wanna do this playground, some additional playground equipment, then I'm not gonna get in the middle of that. I just wanna be as supportive as possible to Park and Recs in helping them manage all the stuff they currently manage.
You'll be pleased to know that the ADA playgrounds are, and Commissioner Walker has been really pushing this very hard, are also viewed as regional economic development centers, because they draw people to an area, because there are only a few, there's only one right now in the metro area, there's another one being built in Leewood, and this one would be another one. So, they're fairly rare in the metro area, and they attract families with special needs kids, and strategically locating this in an area where we can offer amenities for people to go to dinner and people to do other activities, I think this ADA park is going to be a way to leverage our Parks and Rec assets for economic development as well. I think it's gonna be a great opportunity.
I just wanted to point out also that it's, this is the cash side, or cash match of a grant, over on the back page of the debt section, for $350,000. So, that'd be the total project cost.
So, the-
There's $350,000.
There's a grant.
Grant.
It's a three-to-one grant.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's what I need to know, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Again, this is a document that we will finalize when we finalize the budget, so please take the time to read through it carefully, and if you have questions, please bring it to Mr. Bach's office.
And I just, additional input, bring my way, I just say, we've gone through this a few times, trying to get it narrowed down. I mean, you can see, just by looking at bottom lines of where we're at, this is a significant jump in expenses from where we were. So, I'm not 100% once we get through all the operating, that I can maintain everything on the cash side of this. This is a proposed working document that we get to, and as I go through the next 30 days, I gotta get through all the rest of the operating costs that we have in the different areas, and determine where the emphasis is, and may have to slice and dice a few things to, to make it all balance out and work. So, it's, this is the working draft as we go through now, and obviously, we appreciate all the input from all of you.
Is it possible you'll find more money for Wyandotte?
Yeah, that's likely.
All right, that concludes our meeting tonight. We are going to convene downstairs at 7:15, and we appreciate our viewers' patience as we catch up with our schedule. Mr. Tobin?
Mayor, Commissioners, we had several trees down as a result of that last storm that went through. There are crews on the clock, and they should be cleared relatively shortly, and that's from streets, and also water pollution has been working heavily all this week on the flooded intersections and various catch bases.
You know, we talk a lot about our first responders and how great they are, and police, fire, and sheriff, let's not forget our street crews, and our water pollution control crews, who are out on call as well, and, and in dangerous situations, so we very much appreciate them. Thank you for highlighting that. All right, we are adjourned downstairs. Debbie? Can I get electronic copies of these?